Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in person and virtual meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first item on the work session agenda is the pledge of allegiance by Hillcrest Elementary students, Roman, and I apologize, Chilean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you, Roman. The last item on the work session agenda is a presentation by Hillcrest Elementary Principal, Ms. Susan Campbell, and Assistant Principal, Elise Gonzalez, titled Cross Curriculum Strategies for English Learners.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. McGary, Board President Fields, members of the school board, students, staff, and community members. My name is Susan Campbell, the principal of Hillcrest Elementary School, and I'm accompanied by my Assistant Principal, Elise Gonzalez, and Hector, and Ariana, who are two kindergarten students that you will see on our video. As educators, all of us want to capture a teachable moment, and in turn, turn that into a learning experience. One of those moments occurred one afternoon in my office at the end of last school year. A fifth grade student was encouraged by her friends to come to my office to sing for me. As a first-year English learner in our school, she belted out a Mariah Carey song with a voice of an angel. As I complimented her, I asked her how long she had been singing, and if Mariah Carey was her favorite artist. She responded with only a smile and a shrug of her shoulders, and she had difficulty answering questions in the English language. To ease her discomfort, I quickly had to flip the script, so I asked her if she would be able to sing her response to me. And again, she sounded like an angel, did not surprise me one bit. I found out that she'd been singing all of her life, and yes, Mariah Carey was her favorite artist. I was absolutely blown away. While preparing for the upcoming school year, I kept going back to that experience in my office. Ultimately, I began thinking that there are ways that we can actually create safe environments, comfortable environments, for English learners to not only learn how to speak English, but to also feel supported throughout a very challenging process. How can we do better? After several conversations with Eileen Caruso, Dr. Linda Fox, and Chris Talamayo, we discussed a cross-curriculum strategy to support teaching our ELL population the English language.
Last year, our principal, Sue Campbell, had a student that came to her that was a non-English speaking student, and the only way she could figure out how to communicate with this student was singing. The student could sing beautifully in English, and that's how she communicated, and after that point, she realized, like, this is a strategy that we could be using to reinforce learning and to teach.
I think everyone knew innately, just, this is a great idea, because we know that music is the universal language, and that it just was going to be something to bring students together, you know?
The ELL students really do well with chanting and repetition. Even in our foundations program, it's, for example, "A apple, ah," and they can memorize that because of the beat that we kind of say it with.
Adding music, words, vocabulary, putting it all together. So it's just enhancing what they already know and helping them go further with it.
So Sue reached out in the summer and said, you know, what do you think? And I said, I know it's a great idea, but let me just look up some research, and there was a ton of information about how it helps the students with their pronunciation and their listening skills.
So then I spoke with Chris Talamayo, who is our fabulous music teacher at Hillcrest.
We're starting with just like this kind of test group, if you will.
We landed on the kindergarteners because we felt that they were the ones that probably needed this strategy the most.
For me, this is an extra time, that it's during one of my preps, but it's, you know, it's only fifteen minutes and everything.
They go in, they stand on the one of their dots that he has on his rug, and they look forward to it.
Can you say Feliz Navidad? Prospero año, remember we did that last time? Prospero año. Can you say año?
Año.
Año, good. Linda and I talked together the week before, what we want to do, what kind of videos are good.
Chris really relies on me to say to him what we're working on as far as the curriculum, because I'm modeling in here, and what I'm teaching in here is reinforcing the foundation's skills that are being taught in their kindergarten classes. So right now, we're working on the alphabet, it might be seasonal.
I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from what? From the bottom of my heart, good.
Four little monkeys, and ABC, head, shoulders, knees, and toes.
We did teach them the Head, Shoulders, Knees, and Toes song.
That seems to be the one they request the most, because it's a movement, and that's another thing, adding movement to it. So it's not just words, it's adding movement and music to it, and I find anytime you can combine all that stuff together, it just helps with the learning process.
The students just enjoy singing it and getting involved and having that outlet.
They love it, they love it. They'll say to me in the morning, is it music today? Do we go to music? Music?
This creates such a great environment for them to feel safe. It's like they have this whole group behind them.
This student in my class, I do really feel like she's more confident with herself.
And we started seeing a huge improvement with her letter recognition. Chris has taught them strategies for making connections between uppercase and lowercase letters.
We can just see the positive benefits from the students. That's making them feel excited to come to school, excited about learning. They are producing more language, they're hearing more language, it's just a win.
Right now, we're just kind of starting, small as all things do, and then we will grow into something else.
Hopefully, we can build upon it now that we see the success, and see how much the students like it, and how much they're benefiting from it.
I love empowering Hillcrest staff to dig deep and find ways to reach all of our students. They encourage and continue to provide guidance, support, that helps our students to achieve when challenged with the most difficult areas of academic understanding, social emotional awareness, and trusting the hands that reach out to them to help them grow. We're looking forward to the Hillcrest staff maintaining and building new relationships as new students become part of the Hillcrest family. A very special thank you goes out to Mr. Jason Taylor for putting our video together. As always, he does an exceptional job, and I would like to thank Dr. McGary and the board for all the support this year, especially Rachel Mitchell, who is our board liaison. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the work that you guys do. It's really, really fun and really fabulous stuff, so thanks again for taking care of our kids and being such, you know, great leaders in the district.
I just want to say kudos to the Hillcrest team, especially the music teacher going above and beyond on his prep period. So yes, it's just fabulous to see and meet in the students' needs, so thank you.
I just want to thank the Hillcrest students who are out here tonight and their families, so thank you so much for taking the time on a relatively snowy sort of day. What a difference a few hours makes, doesn't it? So thanks for coming out tonight.
Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public participation procedures?
Yes, there are several ways to participate in the meeting this evening. Those who are in person have the opportunity to comment to the board first. If you wanted to provide general comments, you would have had to have signed in by seven thirty. You, at the point of general comment at the end of the meeting, you'll come to the microphone, provide your name, address, and your general comment. Tonight is a comment-only meeting, there is not a question-and-answer portion of tonight's legislative meeting. Those who are in person who would like to comment on this particular report, before the board moves forward and takes any action on that report, they will open up to conversations among the board, and then open it up for public comment. You can come to the microphone, provide your name, address, there's a three-minute time limit, and you can provide your comment, and the board will take that into consideration. Those in person will go first, followed by any virtual or phoned-in conversations. Anyone who wanted to send in a general comment that wanted to be read at the end of this meeting, email-wise, had to have sent that in by seven thirty PM, would have had to have provided their name, address, and obviously their general comment. Anybody who would like to provide a virtual comment via email would do the same thing to boardmeetingcomments@upwardrbsd.org, provide your name, address, and either for general comments by seven thirty, or the particular board report that you'd like to comment on, and the board will take that into consideration and make that part of the record tonight before moving forward. You could also phone in a comment at six one zero seven eight nine seven two zero zero, extension two thousand. Again, provide your name, address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on, or if it was for general comment, it would have had to have been received by seven thirty. That's a lot, I'm sure to remember, even publicly. We do send out a communication prior to each meeting to try to get more public engagement. I'm happy to remind everyone as we go through this evening how to participate both in person and virtually.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There is a closed session this evening from five thirty PM until seven thirty PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations, as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act Ninety-three of nineteen ninety-eight. For this evening's meeting, there are personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams?
Present.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Murphy-Mersey?
Present.
Mr. Warsavage?
Present.
Mr. Hussein?
Present.
Mr. Dez Neuer?
Present.
Ms. Glenn?
Present.
Ms. Deborah Williams?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
Present.
And as a note, Director Warsavage is homesick, so we wish for a speedy recovery. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least twenty-four hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer? There are no amendments. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please, actually, okay, those abstaining, motion carried. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of January ninth, and the special meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Director Murphy-Mersey?
The report of secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Brittany Williams?
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We will now have the report of the student representatives, Jade McCants and Fernando Santos.
Good evening, Board President Fields, members of the board, Dr. McGary, and community members. For our February report, Jade and I visited Primus Elementary School and Bywood Elementary School. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to meet with Bywood Elementary School's Assistant Principal, Mrs. Newby, to discuss different topics about Bywood in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our meeting started with a dance party honoring students who have had perfect attendance thus far in the school year. Picture a scene brimming with energy and joy with a large group of wonderful students celebrating their accomplishments by engaging in different games and activities. After the party, Mrs. Newby informed me that Bywood had taken steps to improve academic performance through reading instructions, sorry. Reading is encouraged in and out of school, and students are enjoying the focus on literacy. To make reading time more enjoyable, Bywood's reading specialist team goes into several classrooms dressed up as popular superheroes to help teachers by selecting a small group of students and focusing on their specific needs, and encouraging them by praising their small reading advancements. These efforts create a positive and interactive learning environment. Bywood has also focused on students' social and emotional development. Therapeutic support staff aid in teaching students basic skills. Additionally, the PBIS program and lessons reinforce positive behavior, teaching students how to control their emotions. Additionally, Mrs. Newby and I conversed about the importance of trauma-infused care in school. One of the most important topics I wanted to discuss with Mrs. Newby was bullying. Which statistic show can start as soon as elementary school or preschool? Mrs. Newby said Bywood's guidance counselors do various guidance lessons to prevent bullying. These lessons are often about kindness and nice play. Along with these lessons, all students have grade-level meetings at the beginning of the year to show what bullying is, and different examples of acts that would be considered bullying. However, students may not always feel comfortable with sharing if they're being bullied. Therefore, Bywood has implemented a new way students can open up, called a bug and a wish, in which students can explain something that is bugging them and something they wish would change. Celebrating different cultures is a priority at Bywood, and as a former ELL student, I was joyful to be informed that Bywood's ELL team has been working hard with each English learning student, and also involving their parents by having ELL parent night once a month. Involving parents and their students' academic life is very important, which home and school meetings help immensely with, as well as many family-involved events. These events can help students with their reading skills, giving them instant feedback, like a mirror night, which gives instant feedback as they read by using the program A Mirror Learning. Mrs. Newby expressed that building a relationship with the school and parents is a top priority for the administration and teachers at Bywood. These relationships are built by communicating and reassuring them that their students are safe at their school, which parents love to hear. Apart from bingo nights, reading nights, and ELL parents' nights, events like fundraisers and a PBIS school store help motivate students to do better in and out of school every day and represent the Upper Darby School District proudly.
This month, I had the great opportunity to interview the principal, Mr. Rogers, and the Assistant Principal, Mr. Cassitano, of Primus Elementary School. The school year has been going very well so far. Their main goal is student academic growth, and they are very proud of the progress they have made so far. Primus recently marked the ninetieth day of school with a nineties-themed day. Everyone was dressed up in nineties clothing, which was a lot of fun, and the kids came up with some amazing looks. There was also literacy bingo night, student of the month, the someone special dance, and the dance and dribble. Mr. Rogers and Mr. Cassitano noted that Primus has undergone a makeover the last couple of years. The building is now a source of pride for the community. They've also taken efforts to improve the student experience at Primus. Lunch and recess times were also switched so that the children could burn off their energy and have lunch before returning to class. Primus is constantly striving to figure out what works and what doesn't, so that they can improve year after year for the benefit of their students. After the interview, Fernando and I got a tour of the school. Primus was significantly bigger than I expected. On the tour, we saw the gym where some of the kids were doing the bowling activity. There was an emotional skills session going on in one of the classrooms, and the students were so focused on the subject that they didn't even notice us standing there. We also saw a bulletin board with Black History Month projects and learned about some of the previous iterations, as well as seeing how interactive it is this time of year. Finally, Fernando and I posed in front of the Bee, the Eye and Kind wall, and Mr. Cassitano took a picture of us. Mr. Rogers and Mr. Cassitano made it clear that connecting the community with school is one of their main objectives, and that they both are blessed to be the principals of Primus Elementary School. They hope that with more help, trust, and dedication from adults, guardians, and those who care about the students outside of the building, the kids will be even more successful. When all is said and done, when they get up in the morning, the first concern is that their students are safe and prepared to learn. They love their supportive and strong community, and will go to any lengths to ensure their student success. Thank you for your time, this is all for this month's report.
Thank you both very much, really great work, I really appreciate it. I can't believe I missed the nineties theme, it's like the back of my closet, it's awesome. All right. The budget, personnel, and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. We will now have the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
Thank you, thank you for everybody who braved some of the weather conditions, Jade and Fernando, thank you. Students, you had a somewhat of a day off, I'm sure you're high-flying students, so you were doing schoolwork as well today, studying hard, but thanks for making it in. Board President Brown, members of the board, members of the community, I'm sorry, Fields, sorry. I did it for him, it's twice as well, get better next time. Yeah, call him, yeah, so, Sue, thank you to the team, thank you for what you guys are doing there, to the students, thanks for coming out as well. After I finish, or you can even walk out now, I won't get my feelings hurt if you want to go home, but great job, I really appreciate the hard work that's going on at Hillcrest and throughout the school district. Obviously, our student population, the needs of our kids, our entire community, it's our number-one focus, that's why we're here as a school district. So any way we can to find creative opportunities to have students engaged in learning is great. Hopefully, one day, we'll get to hear that beautiful voice and hear you sing, and hear what talent you do have, and I just really appreciate the fact that we're trying to find as many creative ways as we can. I agree, I echo the sentiments of a teacher giving up their prep time and going above and beyond, and to Ms. Linda Fox, who's not only a teacher there, but also the president of our Teachers Association modeling, going above and beyond for our students, so I appreciate that hard work, and Sue, thank you for your leadership there at the school. Tonight, I want to go through a couple highlights here in the school district, recognize our High Q team and the success of our High Q team, recognize our Drexel Hill Middle School Future Cities Competition team, take a moment to highlight what's going on in our Home and School Association tour, and what we've been communicating, and the advocacy that we've asked of our Home and School Association. But before I do that, I want to take a moment and just recognize, you know, a local tragedy, and just remember that tonight, we start this meeting off with our kids, their families, we hear from young students, and then most locally, East Lansdowne has suffered. In a short span, the mayor and that community has suffered the loss of young people in that school district, and then a tragic fire and family and shooting of two police officers, John Mayon and David Shiza, both heroes in their own right, want to recognize that, the sadness of that family and the sadness of that community, but also the heroic actions of two police officers, and then the Upper Darby Police. I've had the privilege and the opportunity to go and to see these police officers be released from the hospital, thankfully, and to see the, just the support group that exists in local law enforcement, the two mayors in Upper Darby and East Lansdowne coming together. I think that spirit, unfortunately, sometimes it comes out in tragedy, but if we can remember that in all of these times, I think it will, you know, move us forward in a much better direction, so just want to highlight that tragedy and keep our thoughts and prayers for all the young people in the communities that are out there, and thank John Mayon, police officer, and David Shiza for what they've done, and also the Upper Darby Police, who went there on that scene and helped save lives, which is pretty tremendous. John Mayon is a police officer that was involved in that in East Lansdowne, he is the husband of our Bywood Elementary School principal, Kristen Mayon, and so, great leadership, great community leadership there, and just want to recognize those families for what they've done, and thank the heroic actions of those leaders, and keep the other community in our thoughts and prayers. Also, to start off, the UDHS High Q team, I received an email from Mr. Joe Rig. Those of you who may or may not know Mr. Joe Rig, he's not shy in his confidence or his personality, he's a teacher at Upper Darby High School, and he took it upon himself to send an email praising Upper Darby High School for having scored a fifty-three in a recent High Q competition. Not only do they score fifty-three, typically, the score is somewhere in the forties, is considered a pretty decent score, and I will not name those that we competed against, but I'll give you an example of how he felt, up there on the screen, that's not good.
Yeah, we smoked, look at that.
Yeah.
That's an expensive private school, isn't it?
Yeah, hold on, yeah, the one thing I don't want to do is ever kind of step on someone to get ahead. School districts are all challenged, are all doing different types of things, and so I want everybody to know that what we've accomplished is pretty tremendous here in the Upper Darby School District with the score and the victory that day, and I don't want to take that away from any other school district, but we need to feel good about ourselves in scoring a fifty-three, beating one of the reigning champions in the Central League, and then a local private school, is pretty substantial. Mr. Rig, when he sent the email, said, you don't know how big of a deal this is, this is similar to beating the Patriots in their highest championship run with Tom Brady at quarterback. And then he went a step further, he said, it's also like beating the Chiefs with Kelsey, Mahomes, and Andy Reid. And so the accomplishment lately of our high school High Q, that it will now be in the playoffs, to win on that day, to win on that caliber, is a big deal. Obviously, we face challenges in the school district, we're underfunded, and it just goes to show, much like the earlier presentation and the comments that have been made, teachers change the lives of kids, and Joe Reagan, all of his confidence, changed the lives of kids, and they feel good about themselves, which we should celebrate. On top of that, the good news too, is that the majority of the members of the team are juniors with only one senior, and so hopefully twenty-four, twenty-five will be just as successful as where we are right now. So I just want to recognize and congratulate Principal Matt Alockway, Joe Rig, and the students on the High Q team, who obviously you can see on the screen, outstanding work, dedication, above and beyond, and beating very high-caliber school districts who have resources, and private schools that have resources beyond ours, just goes to show that there's a lot of talent and skill in our classrooms with our teachers, our families, and our staff, so congratulations to the High Q team. Having personally been an Assistant Principal at Drexel Hill Middle School for a period of time, I know the Future Cities Competition is kind of a legacy, it's an ongoing competition that happens there, and lately, Mr. Harry Crossgrove has taken up the torch leading the Future Cities Competition. It's very serious, the kids take it very serious, there's a lot of practice and preparation that goes into that, so want to congratulate Principal Jill Palladino, Mr. Crossgrove, and the Drexel Hill Middle School Engineering Class for participating in the Future City Competition. It was held at Archbishop Carroll, it's an annual event. The competition focus this year was on Electrify Your Future, and it sounds like they are award winners, they won the Most Coveted Team Choice Award and the Fire Protection Engineering Award, so congratulations, I have a certificate, we ask that we don't have to bring them out tonight, and the weather at the time, they would have been here, the team would have been here, but we'll go and honor Drexel Hill Engineering Team for the awards and their recognition at the most recent Future Cities Competition that took place at Archbishop Carroll, so congratulations to that team. This time, typically throughout the school district, I start to go on what is this Home and School Association tour. It's a lot, and I appreciate the fact that there have been Home and School participation has been outstanding, almost all of cabinet members join me on those calls, principals, teachers are on those calls, I appreciate the parents that come out and allow me to give me the opportunity to speak and take up some of their time on their agenda, I know how hard it is having, you know, trying to help organize a Home and School Association, time is precious, so allowing me to speak at their event, I think is appreciative. Board President Fields, thank you for joining the last three in a row that we had last week. And before we start those meetings, I ask if there are any questions while they have my time, I start the meeting off by asking if there's any questions that you may have made before I go through what I want to cover, because it's not just about me, despite what's out there, and so when we start the meeting, we are asked a series of questions from the Home and School Association. The questions that we've been to three on the tour so far, the questions across the board have been about the anticipation and excitement about Clifton Heights Middle School, there have been some recent hurdles that we're trying to get through with Clifton Heights Middle School, I let them know that we still are hopeful that August of twenty-six would be our opening, but there are some issues that we're having to navigate and work our way through, and we'll provide more of an update when we have those updates. One of the interesting points, and I think Board President Fields would agree, a couple of the parents said, you're communicating too much, it's just a deluge of communication, can you slow it down a little bit, and maybe, you know, tell us the important things that we have to focus on? And I laughed, and I said on the call, you know, the high school students that we meet with on a regular basis tell me, you know, Dr. McGary, when you send something, we delete it, if it comes from a teacher, we'll read it, and so there's no hard feelings telling us that we over-communicate, but it was refreshing in one hand to hear it from the parents in the community, it sounds like it's a bit much. sounds like it's a bit much. And so, some ideas that they came up with about communication and how we handle that. And then again, a common theme was teacher shortage. What can we do to support our teachers? What can we do to support our administrators? It was refreshing to hear about that. And then one concern was expressed, one of the meetings was about the middle school early outs. And a parent, I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but I appreciate your refreshing comments that the early outs at the middle school have been a benefit to their child. And while it might seem a little bit of a concern, it actually allows kids to have a break, check in, do their schoolwork, and catch up. And the parents expressed that they did actually find it as positive. Board President Fields asked me to get that person's name and put them on all of our committees. I haven't done that yet, but I'll be sure to do that. Yeah. And then, I really focused my comments after I asked their questions on asking for some advocacy. On February the 7th, Governor Shapiro came out with a proposal for a budget. Typically, what I do with these Home and School Association meetings is give a general overview of a little bit of a history lesson, that in February of 2023, there was a Supreme Court ruling, a historical Supreme Court ruling, landmark case, that found that the current funding of public schools in Pennsylvania is unconstitutional. We are among the most underfunded state, meaning state dollars going toward public education. We are among one of the worst states in the country as far as state funding going. It really relies heavily on local real estate taxes to fund public schools. So I give a little bit of a history lesson on that. I also let people know that we have to balance our budget per the school code by June 30th every year. And most of the time, we are balancing a budget. This board is having to make decisions without a true, clear picture of state funding and state resources, which is very complicated, very difficult. Craig Rogers has an unbelievable job to be able to do that, and we appreciate what he goes through and what he does do. He's very involved in the curriculum instruction side of the district, which is a big deal. And this board is tremendously patient. But I give that general overview. I also gave some statistics that in Pennsylvania, on average, the 100 most underfunded school districts, which Upper Arby School District is among the 100 most underfunded, there's approximately a $4,800 gap per student spending. So in some school districts where they can spend well over $25,000, on the high end, close to $30,000, another close school district is $4,800 less per child. That's a considerable amount of money per child when you think about what that looks like here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The hope is that that changes. I have been in central office for 14 years as an assistant superintendent and superintendent. And that, that's a long time. And what I've explained to people is that while I am very hopeful and optimistic, I know there's a lot of folks on this board that have been a part of these conversations and advocacy, it has never come to fruition. We were hopeful that last year it would. This year, in February, on February 7th, Governor Shapiro announced the following increases in his proposed budget. And I'm asking for those of you who are listening, and I ask this of the Home and School Association, for your stories and your advocacy, much like this story today, how creative we're trying to be on our own and giving up prep time, and teachers are getting burnt out, to make this all work without the resources. Schools need to be funded. And so, Governor Shapiro seems to be, in his proposed budget, going to increase his basic education funding by $1.1 billion. It's a lot of money, right? Special education's supposed to get an increase of $50 million. Early childhood learning, early intervention for special education students, 17 million. Head start programming, 2.7 million more. Pre-K counts, education for students before kindergarten, 30 million. Career and technical education and dual enrollment programming, 2.4 million, and 7 million for dual enrollment. Cyber charter reform, really important. This seems to have bipartisan support, a cap on what school district would have to pay of $8,000 per cyber charter school, as opposed to $25,000 or $30,000 per cyber charter school. That would be a savings to the Upper Arby School District. School safety grants, upwards of $50 million. Environmental repairs to school facilities of $300 million. Mental health, $100 million. $10 million to recruit teachers. That's a little bit low, but it's a start. And for the first time, those who are teachers on this board and those who have been teachers, raise your hand. How many of us had to pay to student teach, right? We had to pay to go to school and then student teach. Well, now they're putting in $15 million worth of stipends, somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 to pay student teachers while they're student teaching, which is refreshing versus having to pay that dollar amount. And what I explain, when I break this down to the families, is what does this mean for Upper Arby School District? It means we could realize an increase in Upper Arby of over $16 million in the budget for next year. $16 million in basic education funding that we have never seen. The plan at this time to increase funding over the next seven years, so this would be going next year, year one, and the hope would be to make it right, six more years, seven years total, of a similar dollar amount. I've represented, like I said, this district for 14 years as either an assistant superintendent or superintendent. I've spoken at, testified at, hosted fair funding events. I've even been a character in a PCCY play called School Play: It's a Tough Subject. All of this has been done with this community advocating, not only here on this board, but current state reps. Students have participated and communicated and shared their stories at presentations, asking for fair and equitable funding in Pennsylvania. And we need it here in Upper Arby School District. I'm asking in these home and school tours, and I'm asking tonight for our families in this community to continue the advocacy. I know that we have never realized the actual dollars that are up for consideration at this time, but we have to remain committed to our efforts to help secure these funds. And so, I want this board to know and the public to know, we're asking for the Home and School Associations to do it. They're receptive to it. The turnout's been great. We have some plans to do that. I've reached out to Representative Curry, because she's a key player, Representative Boyd as well, but Representative Curry is actually going to be at the table, trying to help get these dollars to the school district. I've connected with her twice, and I'll connect with her again this week on how we can get these stories to her, so when she goes to Harrisburg, she can share our voice. And so, members of the board, thank you for providing me with the opportunity each month to update and address this community. I have been blessed to have this opportunity to work with such a dedicated staff and wonderfully diverse students and families. Every day has been a privilege. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. I was able to attend those three, those three home and school meetings. They were virtual, so that made it a little bit easier. I will say, if coming to these meetings is too much, if keeping up on all the emails and stuff is a lot, joining a home and school association, each school, they're all desperate for members. And you don't have to, you don't have to do a lot of work, right? I'm not saying it's no work, but they're happy to have faces there. And it is a great way to get that information and get that communication. Kind of Reader's Digest version and easier to consume. They all seem very productive when it comes to discussing these general school topics. I think it's, I think it's important. So give it a shot if this is, if these meetings and the emails are more than you can fit in, in your schedule. So, thanks again. All right. We will now have an update on the January 23rd, 2024 Education and People Services Committee Meeting. Mrs. Brittany Williams will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
Thank you. So for that meeting, it was Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM. All members were present. For the agenda, we, the first thing we addressed was adoption of planned instruction. High school mentoring board, and it did require board action. Mr. James Finch, Supervisor of Counseling Services, proposed the addition of new high school elective courses for seniors interested in hands-on experiences as a classroom mentor in the elementary school setting. Then we went into district attendance review, which was an informational session, and it was given by Dr. Brian Urson, and Director of Student Services. He presented the district's attendance goals, and we talked about the definition of attendance. He presented the average daily attendance and regular attendance data. And then we went into a comprehensive equity plan, which was also an informational session, that was given by Dr. John Council, Ms. Kamisha Simpson, and Mr. Christopher Lashley. They presented the district's updated five-year comprehensive equity plan. And the plan focused on the district's commitment to equity as an ongoing daily practice to provide opportunities for all learners in their pursuit of excellence. And then, we went through the 2024, 2025 District One Page Calendar, which required board action, and that was given by Dr. Christine Kelly, Director of Curriculum. And we ended with policy board action, which did require, I'm sorry, we ended with policy, which required board action. So we talked about Policy 103, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students, Policy 104, Discrimination Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff, and then Policy 819 Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response. And then we went into public comment, and there were no public comments that night.
Thank you, Director Brittany Williams. We will now have an update on the January 23rd, 2024 Finance and Operations Committee Meeting from Director Rachel Mitchell, who will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
Thank you, President Fields. Actually, there is not a detailed summary, because the detailed summary on policy is listed under the policy reports in Board Docs. But that night, we, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting met, and we talked about two policies that are moving forward for board action tonight. The first is 001, Name and Classification, and you'll see that in the second reading. So if we adopt that tonight, it will go into effect. And then we had another discussion prior to a first reading on Policy 701.1, Naming of School District Facilities. Both policies move forward to tonight. The naming of school facilities is in a first reading. So board members, you'll have another opportunity to discuss it at our Finance and Operations Committee meeting in a couple of weeks. So please take a look at it. I'm sure Board Member Disnoyers will go over this during the policy report, so I'm not going to go into it. But that concludes my report. President Fields.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you, Director Mitchell. I'll read the instruction. Curriculum Report, Director War Savage is not here. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no online comments.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose.
This is for the calendar, too?
Yep.
Can I approve everything except the calendar?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Mitchell for the Personnel Report.
Thank you, President Fields. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member. And before I move for its adoption, I do want to recognize tonight that we have 10 people listed on for retirements. These are all critical teachers that have really served our district for quite some time. So I want to thank them for their years of service and for the impact that you had on thousands of students. I want to also wish you a safe and healthy retirement. Next, I do want to just acknowledge those professional appointments tonight that are on our report. Welcome to the Upper Arby School District family. And now, I move for the report as stated. Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose.
Aye, aye, aye. The first one. I'm abstaining from the second report.
Okay. All right. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Motion carried. Director Disnoyers, Policy Report First Reading.
Thank you, President Fields. So policies undergoing a first reading do not require a vote at this meeting. However, they will be presented at a subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. The six policies undergoing a first reading at this evening's meeting are, sorry, Policy 006 Meetings, Policy 200, Enrollment of Students, Policy 202, Eligibility of Non-Resident Students, Policy 217, Graduation Requirements, Policy 254, Educational Opportunity for Military Children, and Policy 701.1, Naming School District Facilities. So there is a summary of all these changes, all the updates posted on Board Docs, but just to highlight two areas of change. One significant area of change is related to children of military families, and this is impacting a number of policies, one of which is Policy 254, which is a new policy. There is a, a, sort of a national agreement, an agreement between all the different states to universally recognize military transfers and allow children of military families to enroll in school based on those military transfers. And that is instead of waiting until the family becomes resident in the school district. There are also some other measures being incorporated to basically address, to, to make progress for military children unimpeded as they move through their education. The next is Policy 701.1, Naming School District Facilities, as Director Mitchell mentioned. At the January Finance and Operations Committee meeting, the board had a discussion about if or how we would like to update Policy 701.1, and the board reached consensus on making permanent changes that were temporary to restrict the naming of school district facilities to, so that school district facilities will hereafter only be named after geographic locations, including municipalities and neighborhoods. And it should be noted that this change does not affect any school district facilities that are currently named after individuals. So that is the summary of the changes undergoing a first reading this evening.
Thank you, Director Disnoyers, for second reading approval. Also, Director Disnoyers.
Okay, second reading approval. The Policy Report Second Reading is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Moved to second, and thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yes.
Director Disnoyers.
Thank you. So the policies undergoing a second reading this evening, there are four policies, and if the board approves these changes tonight, the updates will be approved and implemented. The changes are as follows. Policy 001, Name and Classification. The school district's address is being updated due to administration's move to the building we're in. Policy 103 and 104, Discrimination or Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students on the one hand and Staff on the other. There are two changes. One is the school district's address is being updated, as noted. The second change is that the, the district's Title IX off- The second change is that the, um, the district's Title IX officer has, is moving to a new position and is changing the, the title, her title is changing, so that is being reflected. And, um, policy eight nineteen, suicide awareness, prevention and response, uh, is being updated, um, to better address the needs. Um, so that comes, that ends my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Des Noiers. Are, I think I need a second. You did? Okay. Okay. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no online comments.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Uh, the supplies report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Over to the facilities report, Director Murphy Morrissey.
The facilities report and use of facility reports are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. No food services report. Director Deborah Williams.
Thank you.
Uh, the Finance and Budget Report, sorry.
Yep. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
No public comments, virtually.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. All right. Collateral assignments, reports. I'm going to start first with Director Murphy Morrissey, Delaware County Community College. Any report?
I do not have a report for Delaware County Community College yet.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, Director Mitchell, the DCIU.
Sure. The DCIU met last Wednesday for its regular business. There were just normal contracts that they were approving, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Director Glenn, anything for Legislative Council?
I do not have any updates for the Legislative Council. Our meeting is tomorrow morning.
All right, fantastic. I look forward to hearing it next month. Men and Whole Scholarship, Director Brittany Williams.
Yes, we met on Monday, February fifth. Um, our next meeting will be May thirteenth. There, at that meeting, um, it was my first meeting, so I got to meet, um, the board and we kind of went through and we accepted new board members. Um, we talked about the treasures report, we went through the compliance committee report. Um, one thing I would like to report back is we had a, uh, three hundred and ten applicants this school year.
Okay, great.
Um, and they are going to give, um, four scholarships this school year.
Fantastic.
Yes. Um, so yeah, that concludes my report.
Home and School, um, Director War Savage is not here. I did attend those home and school meetings with, um, Dr. McGary. Uh, I did stick around at, for the meeting at, uh, Aronamick Home and School. It was, uh, lively, it was active, uh, they were excited. Um, one of the teachers had, had been sent to a conference and he just was so pumped about what he had to bring back. Um, and, um, it was really neat to see and a really engaged group that is doing a lot of really good work on their, in their own time in the evenings. And, and though we have board members, and Director Glenn, you are, and a couple others are also on their local home and schools, and it's, it's, you know, it's extra work, but it's great and, you know, it's really taken part of the process and it's really good to see. So that was, that was really, really something that was neat. So, uh, like I'll say again, if you have the time, you know, spend some time helping out on your local school's home and school association. PSBA representatives, Director Deborah Williams.
Um, I wanted to announce again, I announced this last month, but there is new school director training available, and advanced school director training available, and just so the public knows, that's required for all of the school directors up here. Um, we can find, uh, details on my psp.org. Um, also there's board leadership, uh, workshop. I'll mention that again, I mentioned it last month. There's one coming up on Thursday, February fifteenth, from four forty-five to eight forty-five PM, and that's for board leadership or anybody interested in board leadership. There's also in-person opportunities on Saturday, March nineteenth, I'm sorry, Saturday, March sixteenth, and Saturday, March ninth, uh, in person. Um, there's also a school, uh, director monthly exchange via Zoom every month for anyone that's, uh, interested. Um, we also have two, uh, school director representatives going to Dallas, Texas, February twenty-second through the twenty-fifth to the COSPA annual conference. Um, and I think that's Director Des Noiers and Director Murphy Morrissey, uh, to represent the school board there. Um, so that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Director Williams.
Um, I have an update to make. I spoke in era when I said it was four scholarships, it's actually three this school year, but they're going to get back up to four. Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. All right. Thank you. Both of Williams gave me additional updates. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, policy liaisons, Director Des Noiers, back to you.
Uh, I have, I have no update. Thanks. All right. I just want to thank this, this board, uh, for your, your forethought and for Marvin Lee. I know there were some concerns related to a policy and the use of facilities regarding Highland Park Basketball Association, and I think how this board stepped up and put kids first under your leadership, uh, down into the team. I appreciate that, and to Marvin Lee, trying to be creative, how to solve those problems. So I appreciate this board making sure the kids were responded to and you guys really worked together to process through that, and to Marvin Lee for trying to work that out related to the policy. I just want to thank you and Marvin for that work.
Thank you, and thank you, Marvin. Communication, Directors Mitchell and Director Glenn.
Um, I hope everyone rece- I heard there's a little bit of feedback about too much, um, information. We are trying to give the public a, um, synopsis, short synopsis of what happens at these board meetings. I do think it's important for the public. So we try to keep them short. They also do include, um, some district-wide things. Um, they come out monthly, um, we're working on February's, and, uh, it'll be out shortly.
Fantastic. Uh, we're still looking to fill the Upper Darby Arts Education Foundation, uh, liaison, um, seat. I don't know if Director Morrissey has, has a report. You have, you have a report, thank you. And you are graciously, still attending.
Yes.
Until we put somebody in there, and I really do appreciate that. I really, really, I owe you a drink.
Yeah, too. So I do have a report from the foundation. Um, there was a meeting on, um, January sixteenth with, to appoint new officers, but I also wanted to announce that one of the Service Club kids was able to go to, his name is Dilver Diljit Singh. He serves at Murphy's Given Market and he also does lots of service in the community. Um, he was able to go meet the president with a few other Murphy's Market students, and he gave a report about his, his day with the president down at Philabundets. Um, so they did approve a new president, Ryan Stone. They had, their goals are to increase fundraising, hire staff and obtain a facility or studio. Um, they're currently preparing for their summer, um, twenty twenty-four programming year for Music Man Camp and Summer Stage. They are currently holding pop-up sessions, ukulele, flute, jazz, jam, drumline. We did participate in the ukulele, it was kind of fun. Um, and that is it for the report.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, and that concludes the collateral assignment reports. Old business. Director Mitchell.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to state, um, just in our minutes that I was not in attendance at the review of the charter school, um, hearing that we held back in December, and I wanted to let the board and the public know that I've reviewed the video and re-read the documents online. I know that we're going to be voting on that soon, so I just wanted everyone to know that I have, um, reviewed all those things.
Thank you. Director Mitchell, you are very thorough and I really do appreciate that work. Thank you so much. Anything else for old business? New business? Um, uh, I want to make one request, right? In the last week, we had two, uh, well, let me preface this. Uh, in his superintendent's report, Dr. McGary talked about, you know, broader what's going on in the community and how it's affecting the district and how we're all really kind of connected in this district, right? And, and at a state level, what we're, we're trying to get done to help, help the district as far as funding and things like that. And I, I just want to bring it down to something more locally that everybody can do easily, and that is in the last two weeks, we had two kids at different ends of our district, uh, get hit by a car, uh, either, I think both times leaving school, right? And so this is not a big ask, right? But I'm, I'm asking people in the community, when you get in your car, you're either going to work or you're going to someplace else, see a friend or what have you, just slow down. Just slow down, right? Uh, there are studies that show, you know, if it's twenty minutes to get from A to B, doesn't matter if you do that twenty minutes, twenty-five miles an hour or thirty-five miles an hour, it's going to take you twenty minutes, right? So just, just be careful, right? We have lots of students in this commu- I'm going to borrow a phrase. We have lots of kids and students in this community and none despair, all right? So please, 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 please. And, you know, this is, of course, obviously around the schools, but a lot of intersections in this community are blind. People have bushes, you can't see around, just, just slow down, right? And if there's a stop sign, it's not a comma, it's a period. Just stop, right? And take, take your time, right? Cause the kids that get hit, right, they're traumatized, but the person in the car, if they have any empathy at all, they're traumatized too, right? So spare yourself that, spare this community that, and just, just slow down. It's not a big ask. I'm not asking people to go to Harrisburg and advocate for more funding. I'm not asking you to show up at ten meetings a month. Just slow down. Just slow down a little bit, okay? Thank you. Anybody else for new business? We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby, I don't have a sign-in sheet. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who signed in to address the board in order, in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with policy nine zero three, the time allotted for the general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. I'm assuming, since I don't have a sign-in sheet, nobody signed in. Fantastic.
There are no virtual general comments either.
And there are no virtual, not that it's really fantastic, just I made it the correct assumption, that's all. That's fantastic. Thank you for the update for the, um, for the virtual comments. That moves us to the next part, which is, is there a motion for the adjournment of this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All of those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.[1771.82][1771.82]